We're having mic problems, so.
Good morning. Well, thank you for joining us this morning as we continue our series of hearings on the future of the Commodities Futures Trading Commission. Today's hearing is focused on how better to protect customers in the futures marketplace. I'd like to extend a warm welcome to all our witnesses today. Your participation in today's hearing is invaluable as we work toward the reauthorizing the commission and improving how it operates. Constituents in Texas and Americans across the nation depend on well-functioning financial markets to manage their businesses. In an increasingly globalized world, these markets provide access to financial tools that enable even the smallest firm to compete in any market. Derivatives markets in particular are essential to agriculture producers and manufacturing structures across the country as they use products such as interest rate swaps and commodity hedges to protect themselves from risks. Yet today, there is uncertainty across the commodities market in the wake of the collapse of two futures commission merchants, MF Global and PFG Best. In both cases, customers who thought their funds were held in safe segregated accounts suffered financial losses. Since the failures of MF Global and PFG Best, the futures industry has taken several important concrete steps to improve the strength of the system overseeing segregated accounts. Among the most notable of these changes is the daily electronic monitoring of customer account balances, a simple step that actually led to the uncovering of the fraud occurring at Peregrine Financial. Yet despite these improvements, no surveillance system is foolproof. There will always be risks inherent in trusting another person with your money. Honest people make mistakes and bad people commit crimes. As mistakes occur, regulators and this committee must continue to refine the market surveillance systems. But when crimes occur, it's essential that our justice system acts deliberately and decisively to punish those who harm others and cast doubt on the safety of financial markets. Our challenge is to put in place systems and processes that ensure mistakes are caught swiftly and wrongdoing is made exceptionally difficult. As we do so, we must examine whether the costs of new regulations outweigh the benefits to the marketplace. In particular, I know that members of this committee are interested in testimony about the CFTC's proposed rule on customer protections. Many of the farmers and ranchers who are supposed to be protected by this rule have expressed deep skepticism of it, which I share with them, because they believe the CFTC's proposal would significantly increase their hedging costs and ultimately limit their ability to manage their risks. Improving customer protections in futures markets is a topic that members on both sides of the aisle have been eager to explore for some time. For many of our constituents, the failure of MF Global and PFG Best added a new worry to their already overcrowded plate of concerns. An essential part of our job as lawmakers is to figure out the best way to restore confidence in investors' funds, confidence that investors' funds will always be safe, no matter what happens to other market participants. I look forward to the testimony from our witnesses today as to a good conversation about what the industry has fixed so far, what problems still remain, and what legislative role this committee will play in addressing those issues. Again, I'd like to thank our witnesses for their willingness to share their expertise with us. As well, I'd like to thank all the members of the subcommittee for their continued diligence in these hearings to reauthorize the CFTC. We will produce better legislative product because of our collective engagement on these issues. With that, I'll turn to my friend and partner in these issues, ranking member David Scott, for his opening remarks. David?
Thank you, Chairman Conaway. As always, I'd like to join you in first turning on the mic. First, I'd like to thank you, join you in warmly welcoming our distinguished witnesses and guests to our subcommittee. Today's hearing is one of the final pieces in our effort to prepare for the coming Commodities Exchange Act reauthorization. And I look forward to a robust exchange of information regarding the protection of customers of futures commission merchants. Of course, protection of market participants is one of the core functions of the CFTC. Unfortunately, it's in an area in which we've seen several startling lapses in oversight recently. Whether it is MF Global, Peregrine Financial, or most recently, the fines against Vision Financial, which ironically absorbed much of the portfolio of Peregrine upon its collapse, one has to ask questions about the structure of the current oversight system and its appropriateness for the way the markets currently operate. That is not to say that the CFTC isn't working hard. They are working hard to ensure that customer funds are not co-mangled with company funds. However, the CFTC is being asked to provide oversight for markets that have grown exponentially, extraordinarily much larger over the last 10 years, and all the while attempting to implement a very complex and complicated new financial regulatory regime in Dodd-Frank without a sufficient increase in the resources and funds and staff that they need to be made available to them to do the job. This is so important. We have got to stress the appropriate appropriations level. If we're going to put these demands on the CFTC, if they've grown as they've grown, then we've got to grow their budget to match and make sure they have the resources to do their job. And as such, the CFTC has been forced because of a lack of funds, because of a lack of standing, to become reliant on self-reporting and third-party auditing. That's not the way to go because that only opens up room for error and outright criminal activity. And that's what we've seen. And unfortunately, when we see problems with the futures commissions merchants, it negatively affects their customers and our constituents, like our farmers, our co-ops, our corporations like Delta and Coca-Cola in my district, and ultimately, all of the American people are affected, which is what brings us here today. So, Mr. Chairman, again, I thank you for holding this important hearing. The perspectives of market participants in the CFTC's work in protecting customers and the FCMs will indeed be vital as we move forward. We must ensure that whatever regime the CFTC moves and puts into place works well with all involved in the market, reducing risk and protecting customer funds without significantly raising the price of doing business. So, our examination here today will help in that respect. Thank you, and again, I yield back the balance of my time.
Thank the gentleman. I also recognize that the full committee chairman, Frank Lucas, is with us this morning, and Frank will be participating in the inquisition of our witnesses shortly. The chair would request that other members submit their opening statements for the record so that witnesses may begin their testimony and to ensure that there's ample time for questions. I'd like to welcome our panel of witnesses. I'll introduce off six of them, and then to start with Mr. Duffy. Mr. Duffy is Executive Chairman and President of CME Group in Chicago, Illinois. We also have Mr. Daniel Roth, President and CEO of the National Futures Association from Chicago. We have Dr. Christopher Kulp, Senior Advisor, Compass Lexicon from Chicago, Illinois. We have Michael J. Anderson, Regional Sales Manager at the Andersons, Inc., Union City, Tennessee, on behalf of the National Grain and Feed Association. And we have James Catulus. Is that close, James? All right, buddy. Esquire, President and co-founder of the Commodity Customer Coalition in Chicago, Illinois. And Mr. Ted Johnson, President, Frontier Futures, Inc., from Cedar Rapids, Iowa. So, with that as introductions, Mr. Duffy, please begin.
Thank you. Good morning, Chairman Conaway. Ranking Member Scott, I want to thank you for the opportunity to testify regarding customer protection in the futures industry. CME, NFA, and others responded to the failures at MF Global and PFG by enhancing customer protections. These enhancements include, and I'll read the following, daily segregation reporting by all FCMs, increased surprise reviews of segregation compliance, bi-monthly reporting on investment of customer funds, periodic electric confirmation of customer balances, daily feeds showing balances of cash and securities for all customer accounts at depositors, and CEO/FO sign-offs on significant customer fund distributions. The CFTC's proposed rules codify many of these initiatives. In addition, the CFTC has required gross margin at the clearinghouse level. This further protects customers from the kind of losses caused by MF Global and PFG. Unfortunately, the CFTC also has proposed a bad rule. This has justifiably raised concerns among participants in the agricultural markets and many members of Congress. The rule would require FCMs to ensure that each customer's account is fully collateralized at all times. The problem is FCMs cannot accurately calculate customer margin requirements in real time. Practically, this means that customers will be required to double their margin requirements, or two, FCMs will be required to contribute very large sums as residual interest on behalf of their customers. This rule will make the marginally profitable FCM business unsustainable for many firms that serve the agricultural community. Further, it may deprive not just FCMs, but their customers' access to futures markets. The residual interest rule is not necessary to protect customer funds. It costs, and the negative consequences outweigh any added protection. This over-collateralization is unwarranted from a risk management standpoint. No regulatory risk model assumes that all customers with margin requirements will fail to meet them. The proposed rule would drain liquidity and increase the cost of hedging financial and commodity risk, especially for farmers and ranchers using our markets. Unfortunately, the greatest impact of increased costs would be felt by the smaller and mid-sized firms that serve them. They may be driven out of business. The unintended consequences is that this would actually increase systemic risk by concentrating risk among fewer firms. Ironically, the proposal would force customers to place more collateral with their FCM, at the very time they may be trying to avoid fellow customer risk or FCM misconduct. We understand the commission is considering phasing in the rule possibly to mitigate the consequences I just described. A phasing does not cure the problem, however. Instead, CME supports the FIA alternative. This approach would permit an FCM to calculate its required residual interest as of 6:00 PM on the first day after the trade date. Now, I'd like to comment on adopting an insurance regime. Professor Kulp concludes that the only workable insurance is likely private insurance. This insurance will be provided through a company owned by participating FCMs. There seems to be no commercial interest in providing insurance to individual customers or specific FCMs. He also explains that it is not feasible to have universal futures insurance mandated by the government similar to CIPIC. Professor Kulp points out that its funding based on the FCM's gross revenues would be highly regressive. Large FCMs would pay a lopsided share while their customers would likely benefit the least from the $250,000 coverage. He concludes that the first-year funding, estimated at $25 million, would not grow fast enough to reach the target level of $2.5 billion until more than five decades later. So, without a government backstop, the plan would significantly underfund relative to potential private solutions, and we certainly would not support imposing the burden on the taxpayers. Customer protection is the cornerstone of our industry. We've strengthened our approach, and we will continually consider ways to enhance the safety of customer property. At the same time, we strive to avoid unnecessary cost or change to market structure. This will serve customer needs by making certain that we have deep pools of liquidity that allows customers to mitigate their risk. I thank you, Mr. Chairman. I look forward to answering your questions.
Thank you, Mr. Duffy. Mr. Roth?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I certainly think it's appropriate that the focus of today's hearing is customer protection issues, and certainly at NFA, that's what we focus on every day. And as both the chairman and ranking member pointed out in their opening statements, over the last two years, the failures, first at MF Global and then at Peregrine, certainly highlighted the need to strengthen the overall regulatory structure. And over the last two years, that's exactly what we've been working on. We've worked very closely with the CFTC and with the CME and with the entire industry. And just as Mr. Duffy reviewed, we've implemented, developed and implemented a wide range of regulatory enhancements. They're described in my written testimony, and they're all important. They're all significant. But if I could focus your attention on one, it'd be one that Mr. Duffy mentioned as well, and that's the daily confirmation of segregated balances. So, for years and years, we've required FCMs to file daily reports with either the NFA or CME regarding the amount of customer funds that they're holding. And then what we would do is, among other things, we would confirm those balances reported by the FCMs. We'd confirm those balances to outside sources, to the banks holding those funds, as part of the annual examination process. Well, clearly, that wasn't good enough. We had to find a better way to do this, and that's exactly what we've done. We've partnered with the CME, and together we've developed this system that provides for the daily confirmation of segregated balances, so that we receive reports from over 2,000 bank accounts confirming the balances that those banks are holding for customer segregated funds. And then we perform an automated comparison between the reports from the FCM and the reports from the bank to identify any sort of suspicious discrepancies. So, that daily confirmation process, along with all the other regulatory enhancements that we've made, I think clearly make the regulatory structure now significantly stronger than it was two years ago. And we're very gratified, really, that so many of the changes that we developed were incorporated into the CFTC's rule proposal. And we support so much of what's in the CFTC's rule proposal. But as Mr. Duffy mentioned, there are other aspects of that rule that are very, very troubling. And let me just add a few points with respect to residual interest. What the commission basically is proposing would require every FCM to assume that every customer is going to default on every margin call. And then they'd make sure that they always had enough funds on hand to cover that possibility. Well, let me make four quick points. Number one, this rule proposal on residual interest has absolutely nothing to do with either MF Global or Peregrine. Neither one of those cases had anything to do with customers not meeting margin calls. Number two, this is the first time in its 39-year history that the commission has taken this position, that somehow the act requires FCMs to assume that all customers will default on all margin calls. They've never taken that position before. Number three, there's an underlying assumption under this rule that all customers meet their margin calls with wire transfers and that nobody writes checks anymore. And that assumption's just not right, particularly in the ag sector, where both ag end-users and the FCMs that service them regularly accept checks as margin payment. And fourth, just as Mr. Duffy mentioned, this proposal could have a devastating impact on both end-users and the FCMs that service the ag industry. Like Terry said, either the customers have to put up a lot more money, or the FCMs have to put up a lot more money, or both. And the net effect is that you're going to have fewer farmers using the futures markets to hedge their risk and fewer FCMs to service those customers. It's a bad idea, and it shouldn't go forward. Finally, Mr. Chairman, let me just mention the Griffin trading issue again. I've testified about it before. Over 30 years ago, the CFTC adopted a rule which provides that if an FCM bankruptcy proceeding, that if there's a shortfall in customer segregated funds, the term "customer property" includes all of the assets of the FCM until the customers have been made whole. And I think that's a really good rule. It's been on the books a long time. It gives customers the priority and the protection they deserve. But several years ago, a federal district court cast some doubt about the validity of that rule. They issued a decision, which was later vacated, which questioned the commission's authority to adopt that rule that they did. Well, I think we have to address that. We have to eliminate that doubt. We have to eliminate that cloud of uncertainty. And I don't think that requires us to amend the bankruptcy code, and I don't think that requires us to have FCMs run around and get a multitude of subordination agreements from various creditors. Section 20 of the Act deals with FCM bankruptcy proceedings. I think we can amend Section 20 of the Commodities Exchange Act to make very clear the commission's authority to adopt the rule that it adopted, and we'd be happy to work with staff to develop that language. Mr. Chairman, thank you very much for the opportunity to testify, and I look forward to answering any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Roth. Dr. Kulp?
Excuse me. Chairman Conaway, Ranking Member Scott, other members of the committee, thank you very much for the opportunity to appear here today. In December 2012, Compass Lexicon was engaged by CME, the Futures Industry Association, NFA, and the Institute for Financial Markets to conduct an analysis of the potential benefits and costs of a customer asset protection insurance scheme of some kind that would apply to customers of U.S. futures commission merchants. I was the director and am the director of this study, and I'm pleased to give you a progress report today on where we stand with the study, as well as offer some preliminary conclusions based on what the data and our discussions with market participants have thus far demonstrated. Just to be clear, the risk that we're contemplating would be potentially covered by customer asset insurance is the risk that an FCM failure would result in losses of customer assets if the FCM is undersegregated when it fails. In other words, the customer assets actually at the FCM are below the liabilities to customers of the FCM. That can occur for two reasons. One would be misfeasance or malfeasance, as occurred, for example, with MF Global and Peregrine. Another concern of some market participants is that so-called fellow customer risk could impose under-segregation-related losses. Fellow customer risk occurs when one or more customers of the FCM face significant losses, miss a margin call, and that results in a deficiency in customer funds. That in turn results in asset losses for the other non-defaulting customers. When evaluating the potential benefits of any kind of customer insurance regime, you have to keep in mind two things. Insurance doesn't exist in isolation, so the benefit of insurance has to be considered... So the benefit of insurance has to be considered, both with respect to the cost and to the probability that the underlying risk event will actually occur. I'm not here to discuss these various other enhanced protections that have occurred since MF Global, but these protections that the other panelists are all discussing are relevant because to the extent these additional protections are working to reduce the risk that there's an under segregation at the time of an FCM failure, the value of insurance becomes potentially less with respect to its potential cost. A significant objective of our study has been to try to estimate or quantify the cost of alternative insurance scenarios. Specifically, we considered four scenarios. Three private scenarios. First, direct provision of customer insurance by primary insurance companies. Second, direct provision of customer insurance to FCMs on FCM-by-FCM basis. The third scenario is an industry risk retention group in which a group of FCMs collectively capitalize an insurance company that provides insurance to the customers of the participating FCMs. Those FCMs would retain and bear some of the first loss exposure in the event that there is an FCM failure, but reinsurance would then provide the primary source of capital on top of that first loss layer. The final scenario we considered is a mandated, government-mandated, universal CIPIC-like structure in which every customer of a U.S. Futures Commission merchant would receive up to $250,000 in insurance coverage. In return, that coverage would be funded by a CIPIC-like investor protection fund for futures that's paid for by, under the current proposal, 0.5% of the previous year's gross annual revenues from futures of each and every U.S. FCM on a mandatory basis. And that would be a target funding level for the fund of $2.5 billion. To facilitate the analysis of the three private scenarios, we've engaged for the better part of a year in a comprehensive data collection and analysis and empirical exercise in which case we obtained customer-level data from FCMs. We contacted a number of FCMs and received responses from six, too large, too medium, too small. We consider these broadly representative. We then worked with CME Group to conduct stress tests of this information and data so that we could examine what kind of customer assets might be at risk if an FCM happened to fail during catastrophic market conditions. We then showed summary analyses from those results to about 10 potential interested insurance and reinsurance companies. All of them remain interested. At this point, we do not have quotes or indicative cost estimates from any of them, but we are awaiting those, and we'll provide them with the final study to this committee when it's completed. We can, however, offer several preliminary observations. First, as Mr. Duffy mentioned, we've received no indication of interest in the direct provision of FCM-level or customer-level insurance from insurance market participants. We have, however, received interest in the reinsurance aspect for a voluntary opt-in risk retention group. Our analysis also suggests that a government-mandated universal coverage scheme could potentially suffer from significant drawbacks and concerns, one of which is that the vast bulk of the benefit of a retail-oriented kind of investor protection fund would accrue benefits to the customers that are not bearing a proportional amount of the cost. For example, in 2012, the average amount of assets on deposit at small and medium FCMs was about $100,000 in our data sample as compared to about $25 million at large FCMs. And yet, the large FCMs would be responsible for bearing a disproportionate amount of the costs. In addition, the fund would accrue money over time very slowly, at about $25 million a year, using 2012 numbers, and it would virtually necessitate a government backstop to close the gap to the $2.5 billion funding level. Finally, it would crowd out or discourage innovative market solutions like the risk retention group, and it would essentially freeze a mandated structure in place and complicate the ability of voluntary solutions to close the gap. And I'll be happy to cover any additional materials you have and questions. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Dr. Kulp. Mr. Anderson.
Thank you. Good morning, Chairman Conaway, Ranking Member Scott, and members of the subcommittee. I work for the Andersons Incorporated. I live in northwest Tennessee and run a series of elevators there. The Andersons is a diversified company rooted in agriculture. We were founded in Malmi, Ohio in 1947, and we conduct business across North America in grain, ethanol, plant nutrient sectors, railcar leasing, turf, cob products, and consumer retailing. Today, I'm here representing the National Grain and Feed Association. I serve on the NGFA Risk Management Committee and on NGFA's representative to the CFTC Ag Advisory Committee. In my written testimony, I've detailed several areas that we believe are important for Congress to consider during the CFTC reauthorization. I'm going to focus today on a rule proposed by CFTC last November that would radically change the way business is done in the futures industry. We believe strongly that despite CFTC's goal of enhancing customer protections, that these two provisions of the rule will actually cause a dramatic increase in customer risk. The first provision would decrease the time in which customer margin calls must arrive to their Futures Commission merchant or FCM from the current three days to just one. Otherwise, the FCM would have to take a capital charge for this under-margin account. Even in today's environment of money moving electronically, one day is not sufficient for all customers to make their margin calls. We're urging CFTC to maintain the current three-day timeline. Otherwise, we fear some FCMs would require customers to pre-margin these hedge accounts, potentially putting more customer funds at risk in the event of another FCM insolvency. The second provision of concern, and maybe more troubling than the first, would change the timing of the FCM's calculation of residual interest, which is the funds the FCM contributes from its own money to top up customer accounts until margin calls are received. For decades, this provision of the Commodity Exchange Act has been interpreted by the Commission as allowing some period of time for the FCMs to do this. The CFTC proposal would change that consistent historical interpretation to require that every customer be fully margined on a 24/7 basis. It may sound like a good idea, but in the real world, it causes major problems. Future Industry Association has estimated that this provision alone would cause as much as $100 billion per day to be contributed to hedge accounts, either by FCMs or by futures customers. This would severely stress FCM's liquidity, especially the smaller and mid-sized FCMs that we rely on to serve the ag industry, again, leading us to believe that pre-margining would be a likely conclusion. An unintended consequence could further be consolidation in the FCM world, as smaller firms cannot compete with larger firms who are able to top up these hedge accounts. To bring this down to kind of the everyday world, I'm going to repeat an example that's been given before, so apologies if you have heard it. Consider an average Midwestern grain elevator that handles 5 million bushels of grain every year. Before harvest, this elevator may have 40% of its annual grain volume purchased from its farmer customers through forward contracts. And assuming a crop mix of 60% corn, 30% soybeans, and 10% wheat, that elevator would have to hedge 300 contracts of grain. Today, that would result in a minimum of $920,000 that that country elevator has to send to the FCM just to establish its hedged positions. And recall, this is just one country elevator. Now, if we look at the additional financial requirements, if the CFTC proposal was put into effect, we'll assume that the elevator's FCM is going to require pre-margining of the customer to cover a one-day limit move, which is a reasonable precaution. That country elevator would then have to send an additional $1 million more to the FCM for the possibility of this limit move that may or may not occur. If MF Global had been requiring pre-margining of this fashion, that country elevator is now exposed more than 2X what it would have been originally, about $1.9 million, as opposed to the original 900 it had to send to establish positions. Further, we continue to be confused as to why the meaning of the Commodity Exchange Act has been changed after decades of consistent interpretation. We believe that the Act provides plenty of flexibility for the CFTC's historical interpretation, and we'd be happy to discuss that in more detail. We're also mystified as why the CFTC apparently has not undertaken serious cost-benefit analysis before implementing such a major change in the way the futures industry does business. An indication of the serious problems this proposal would cause for U.S. agriculture. 21 national organizations signed a letter to the Commission on September 18th detailing consequences and urging serious analysis by the CFTC before moving forward on these two provisions. And, Mr. Chairman, I'd request that this letter be included in the hearing record, if that's all right.
Without objection.
We would prefer to work with CFTC to resolve these problems, but there may be a need for legislative action to clarify the interpretation that the futures industry has relied on for so long. I thank you sincerely for taking the time to hear from our industry today, and I'd be happy to respond to any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Mr. Catulis.
Chairman Conaway, Ranking Member Scott, members of the committee, thank you for the opportunity to testify at this important hearing. My name is James Catulis, and I am the president and co-founder of the Commodity Customer Coalition. While I also serve on the Board of Directors of the National Futures Association, my testimony does not necessarily represent the views of that organization. While I'm deeply honored that our organization was invited to testify before this committee before the two-year anniversary of our creation, the fact that we exist at all is evident of the need to improve protections for commodity customers. For those unfamiliar with us, a lot of things had to go wrong for the CCC to be formed. With MF Global teetering on the brink of bankruptcy, its DSRO/CME Group had grave concerns about the sanctity of segregated accounts, and four days before MF Global's bankruptcy instructed its management that no transfers were permitted without CME's express written consent. However, CME Group did not take the extra step of enforcing that instruction by requiring CME approval for wire transfers initiated from MF Global's customer accounts, and it did not require CME's approval in JPMorgan Access, its treasury software. That would have only taken a few minutes to configure. This oversight allowed MF Global staff to transfer customer funds to meet house margin calls at JPMorgan, creating a shortfall of over $1 billion, according to the MF Global, Inc. trustees' report. This occurred despite the fact that, per the trustees' report, JPMorgan's chief risk officer personally informed MF Global senior management that JPMorgan thought customer funds were at risk. JPMorgan sent MF Global management three variants of a comfort letter, asking them to certify that no customer funds were transferred. Although none of these letters were signed and returned by MF Global management, JPMorgan did not return those customer assets for over 18 months after the bankruptcy. Once MF Global filed for bankruptcy, its counsel represented there was no shortfall in customer accounts despite internal communication otherwise. On that basis, the bankruptcy judge permitted MF Global Holdings to enter Chapter 11 rather than Chapter 7 and appointed another trustee to oversee that reorganization. The appointed trustee permitted MF Global senior management to remain at the firm even while over $1 billion in customer money was still unaccounted for, and even went so far to claim attorney-client privilege on their behalf in his dealing with criminal investigators. This transpired in conjunction with a CIPA trustee's alarming initial plan to keep MF Global customers' cash frozen for a full nine months after the bankruptcy and only then allow the release of 60% of the funds. In the face of this long list of obstacles delaying the return of their property, thousands of customers reached out to John Rowe and myself and asked us to help them. We had farmers saying we're incapable of buying seed. Retirees couldn't withdraw their savings to buy medicine. We had a single mom who said she was in danger of losing her home. And, you know, because of this, we spent thousands of hours doing pro bono service to help recover this property. Now, here we stand where the CFTC is asking customers to double down on this FCM system that they don't trust after MF Global, they really don't trust after PFG, and comply with this new residual interest rule. And this rule will definitely do more harm than good. We understand where the CFTC is coming and, you know, wishing to protect customers from fellow customer risk, which is a very valid concern, but asking that the hedge accounts, the farmers and ranchers, to, you know, go to 900 grand, up to 2 million, and expose that to FCM malfeasance when the regulators have proven that they can't stop this? I think that's ridiculous. And I think that what the CFTC could do is to go and maybe enforce this residual interest rule on high-frequency traders, firms which in a couple of minutes with a rogue algorithm can blow up an FCM, but they shouldn't impose it on general commodity customers and upon hedge customers. And moving on to insurance, in testimony before the Senate Committee on Agriculture, Nutrition, and Forestry, the CCC advocated for the creation of a private insurance mechanism to cover FCM malfeasance, much like the one Dr. Kulp delineated. We were the only group to advocate for such a plan before the PFG failure, and we still believe it's a good idea. We agree with Dr. Kulp that private opt-in insurance is the only feasible method for implementation of that, and we urge your committee to consider that. And again, thank you, Chairman Conaway, Ranking Member Scott, for having us here today. We are deeply honored and hope that our feedback is helpful.
Thank you, Mr. Catulis. Mr. Johnson.
Chairman Conaway, Ranking Member Scott, and members of the subcommittee, thank you for inviting me to provide testimony regarding the customer protection rules proposed by the CFTC. My name's Ted Johnson, and I'm president of Frontier Futures, a small, family-owned futures commission merchant based in Cedar Rapids, Iowa, who was started by my father nearly 30 years ago to provide low-cost futures execution to people who want to make their own decisions regarding their trading needs. The vast majority of our customers are farmers or small agricultural firms who use futures markets to hedge their risks. Today, I'm here to provide the views of a small FCM on the rule changes the CFTC has proposed to protect customer funds. There have been a number of highly-publicized failures by futures commission merchants in the past several years involving substantial loss of funds and shaking the confidence of end-users of the markets. I've had more conversations than I can count with customers who are worried about the safety of the funds they invest with us. All these recent failures have involved fraud or malfeasance on the part of the FCM and a failure to follow rules and regulations regarding keeping the proper amount of funds in segregation. The NFA, the CFTC, and other regulators should be applauded for the great strides they've made in the last few years using technology to verify information provided by FCMs. Prior to this, we were required to report our funds in segregation to the NFA daily, but the only confirmation they received was when they came in for an annual audit. PFG showed even this could be subverted for a time. Today, our balances are independently confirmed daily, and if there's a discrepancy, I can tell you the NFA is following up on that quickly. We have also new reporting rules regarding withdrawing funds from segregation. I fully support the rules that seek to codify these changes and give CFTC backing to them, and I believe they will enhance public confidence in the futures markets. The other issue is the co-customer risk that the other members of the panel here have talked about. If debit amounts from a certain customer exceed the capital of an FCM, the rest of the losses are made up by other customers of that FCM whose funds are held in these segregated accounts. To my knowledge, there has not been a case of a customer losing money due to another customer's debit since I've been in the futures industry for about 25 years. Commissioned and interest income is too small when compared to the risk incurred if customer accounts aren't properly monitored to avoid debit accounts. If any markets were going to cause a problem for FCMs, last summer's volatile ag markets would have. However, at least in our case, we now have a single customer who is unable to meet their obligations. Many of the proposed rule changes address this issue. Requiring FCMs to increase risk management standards, increasing requirements for residual interest in segregation, and reduction in days to collect margin calls before they come capital charges are all aimed at protecting an FCM's customer from losses incurred by the other customers of the FCM. Most of these changes have significant costs associated with them. The requirement to maintain separate risk management department is not only expensive for an FCM of our size, but ignores the fact that our entire staff is, in effect, a risk management department. The requirement to maintain residual interest in segregated funds greater than all margin calls at all times will be very difficult for us to track, and it also will require us to choose between greatly increasing our capital or the funds we require customers to deposit with us. Smaller customers who are unable to meet their margin calls on a moment's notice would risk liquidation of their positions. For Frontier Futures as a firm, the option to increase our capital may not even be possible, and the increasing margins may cause many of our customers to either leave us for other firms or cease trading altogether. The residual interest rule may also force a consolidation in the number of small to mid-sized FCMs. Currently, FCMs charge margins based on requirements set by the exchanges. The new rules will create a competitive imbalance favoring firms with access to large amounts of capital, such as bank-owned FCMs, as these firms will be able to fund margin calls by their customers. Firms without this access will be forced to charge much higher rates and may result in migration of customers out of these firms. With fewer customers available, there's bound to be consolidation. This will mostly affect the small to mid-sized FCMs who clear these small hedgers. In the end, all government regulations should meet a cost-benefit analysis standard. Much of the discussion surrounding these rules is focused on the cost side of this equation. In the case of the rules which enhance the ability of regulators to ensure that existing rules are followed and to prevent fraud, the FCM failures at MF Global and PFG have made the benefits clear. However, the benefits of the new rules regarding risk management and residual interest are far less clear, and the costs to the industry and end-users of the markets are real and substantial, especially smaller firms, farmers, and ranchers. Thank you for this opportunity to comment on this issue. I look forward to answering any questions you might have.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. I also thank our panel for strict adherence to the five-minute rule. Appreciate that discipline this morning. The chair will remind members that they'll be recognized for questioning in order of seniority for members who were here at the start of the hearing. After that, members will be recognized in order of arrival, and I appreciate the members' understanding, and I recognize myself for five minutes. Mr. Duffy or Mr. Marath? Mr. Duffy or Mr. Roth, the reinterpretation of the CEA by CFTC, at least they claim there is a sound legal basis for how they came to that new conclusion that they need to reinterpret the act and change this longstanding interpretation. Can you give us your opinions as to that legal basis, or in fact, did the CFTC have a sound legal basis for that new interpretation?
Mr. Chairman, I think the suggestion by the commission that the statute ties their hands on this issue, that's, I think their position is that their hands are tied because the statute provides what the statute provides. In my experience, regulators, including NFA, when they want to do something, or they don't want to do something, their hands are tied. When they do want to do something, they can untie knots quicker than a boy scout. So it strikes me as being odd that for 39 years, the commission consistently misinterpreted the statute. And I think the suggestion that the current proposed rule is mandated by the statute flies in the face of logic to me. I don't think, as a matter of statutory interpretation, they're correct, and I think further the fact that for 39 years, the commission took the other position undercuts their position.
All right. Thank you. Terry in the committee.
I couldn't add to that metaphor, so I'll leave that one alone.
All right. Mr. Johnson, Mr. Anderson, I'm sorry. No, Mr. Anderson. One of the issues of importance is to family farmers is funding financing and providing themselves with protection from market volatility by hedging in the commodity markets. We're concerned that the CFTC has nearly finalized its customer protection rules, but the very farmers and ranchers that it's supposed to help have recently come out opposed to it. In your opinion, is the staff of the CFTC ignoring the concerns of small agricultural customers despite the overwhelming concern that Congress and the administration has expressed for the financial well-being of family farms?
I'm not sure if they're ignoring it, but I think we're all here today to make sure that that voice is getting heard. I think there's momentum, you know, obviously, the messages today are pretty similar, so I think we just want to make sure that is heard.
All right. Dr. Kulp, thank you for your work on this insurance study. Could you spend a little time walking us through the mechanics of how $25 million fee will grow to $2.5 billion in 2067, and why that's not necessarily a viable option?
Sure. In order to get to that particular number, which is, there's a chart that's contained in my written testimony, made the assumption that there's no change in the gross revenues from the futures industry from the FCMs from 2012 levels. In other words, no increase nor no decrease. So using the 0.5% annual contribution rate for all 70 FCMs that reported in 2012, that gets us to a 25.5 million a year number. We then assume it's invested at 2% a year and that there are absolutely zero claims or losses. In that situation, the fund would grow to 2.5 billion after 55 years. The same thing happened with CIPIC, and this is also a chart that's in my written testimony. If you look at the profile of CIPIC when it was funded in the first place, the funds in CIPIC grew very slowly. So had there been a very large loss early in the life of CIPIC, the only thing that would have made the CIPIC facility at all credible was the $2.5 billion essentially line of credit that CIPIC has with Treasury. That's why, to me, the idea of a universal government-mandated fund along these lines just isn't a credible viable option to provide capital and assurances to investors unless it's including an implicit or explicit government backstop.
All right. And in the time remaining, could you flesh out a little bit why the futures market may not be well-served by a model that's designed for clients in the retail equity market?
Sure. In fact, those are related issues. It's a good question. I mean, futures are risk-shifting markets. You've heard this from my other co-panelists already. Securities markets are markets for investment and capital formation. The historical role of participants in futures markets has not been of retail investors. There is a retail component, but the vast majority of futures trading participants are commercial hedgers that are managing the risks of their businesses, institutional investors like pension funds, et cetera. Often, the sizes of the accounts held by these participants are relatively large, especially compared to $250,000 policy limit. So to some extent, having a retail-type, government-backed fund for a wholesale, sophisticated market is a bit like ramming a square peg into a round hole.
All right. Thank you, gentlemen. I'll ask some other questions later. Mr. Scott for five minutes.
Thank you very much. Mr. Duffy, may I start with you? And I listened to your testimony, and you recommend the Future Industries Association's alternative proposal to residual interest. That is to permit an FCM to calculate its required residual interest as of 6:00 PM on the first business day after the trade date. As we do not have the FIA here to testify, can you explain to the committee how this proposal accomplishes what the CFTC is aiming for in its proposed rule without the costs that everyone here has testified to?
Well, without having FIA here, what we have, our understanding is, and what I've talked with our risk folks and our clearing folks is, in talking with all of our FCMs, they believe that they can calculate, or they can collect somewhere in the neighborhood of 80% to 90% of the margin that's due by the next day. Mr. Roth is correct. Everybody does not do wire transfers. Many still do checks, but for the most part, we can probably wire most of the money in by 6:00 PM the next day, but there is still outstanding 10%. So that is really what the alternative calls for. And I think what's important here, the commission's interpretation of "at all times," you heard the gentleman to my far left make a comment about how they cannot comply with such a requirement, and I think this is a compromise that makes complete sense. So that's really how they came up with it. We believe firmly that we can get most of the margin in by 6:00 PM the next day.
Very good. Now to you, Mr. Roth, to Mr. Kulp. Well, actually, if we have time, I'd like the whole panel to respond to this. Many of you highlight two particular risks to customer segregated accounts, those arising from the futures commission's merchant itself, and those arising from losses experienced by fellow customers. Now, given the history of the futures market, which of these risks is greater, and which risks should we be most worried about attempting to address in this CFTC reauthorization? And if I could get as many responses as we could.
Thank you, sir. Back in, I guess it was around 1986, NFA did a study of FCM insolvencies, going all the way back to, I think, 1938. And if you look at the whole history of FCM insolvencies, by far, the most frequent cause of an FCM insolvency is malfeasance. By far. Judged in terms of frequency, the customer, or rather, FCM malfeasance is the greatest risk. In terms of magnitude of the risk, if you did have these sort of cataclysmic market events that sparked a number of defaults by major institutional customers, the magnitude of those losses that could be caused by fellow customer risk would be far greater than what happens through malfeasance. But as far as frequency, by far, it would be the malfeasance by the FCM historically.
Mr. Kulp, would you?
I think Mr. Roth is right. I would actually add one thing, though, that if you think about the fellow customer risk, we actually have done analyses of these numbers, again, working with CME and the stress-testing model. In order for the magnitude of fellow customer risk to exceed the malfeasance, misfeasance risk, you would not only have to have a truly catastrophic market move, but you'd actually have to have a fairly large number of the customers of the FCM fail to make their margin payments. If you look at just a few hundred for a large FCM, and we went through a number of iterations of this, but if you don't have widespread failures to pay, then even the magnitude of fellow customer risk can actually be below the misfeasance or malfeasance risk. So I agree. I think that's bang on.
All right. Now, very quickly, in previous testimony, this subcommittee has heard calls for increased penalties for mark manipulation, attempted manipulation, other violations, in order to better protect customers by having stronger punishment for wrongdoers. Do you agree, or do you think current penalty levels are sufficient to dissuade wrongdoing in the derivatives market?
Yeah, I'm sure everybody wants to talk about that, but I'll jump in first because I was quickest with the button. You know, ultimately, the strongest deterrent you can have is criminal enforcement of rules. Civil penalties are fine, they're important, but nothing is more effective than vigorous prosecution of existing laws. And it's frustrating for everybody because there's always so many competing interests for the resources of the prosecutors, as well as any other facet of government. But that's really where you're going to achieve the greatest deterrent impact. This would be vigorous criminal prosecution of the existing laws. Civil penalties are important. I don't mean to minimize them, but nothing is more important or effective than criminal prosecutions.
Well, thank you so much. I see my time is running. Maybe we'll come back and I, second round, I can get responses from others on that.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Scott. Chairman Lucas.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I thank you and the ranking member for this hearing and all of the work you've done on this subject matter. And I certainly appreciate our witnesses appearing today to discuss an issue that has garnered a lot of attention. As we've been discussing here, the CFTC has proposed a rule that seeks to improve customer protections. However, I worry that the commission's missed the mark with much of its proposal, of course. As currently drafted, the futures commission merchants would be forced to use their own capital to cover all customer positions at all times of the day, in addition to farmers and ranchers that would then now have to meet one-day margin requirements. And for many of our rule folks, our farmers and ranchers, a one-day margin call is simply unrealistic. So I ask the group this. To anyone's knowledge, have there been conversations between USDA and CFTC about the impact of this customer protection rule that it will have on farmers? That's what I was afraid of. Given the vocal outcry from producers in the ag marketplace, and I ask again this question generally to the group, are you optimistic that the, in thinking about the outcry from producers in the ag marketplace, are you optimistic that the commission will repropose this rule or at least make meaningful changes? That's what I was afraid you'd say. Let the record show that there was not any optimism on either question there in that regard. I just would note that I wrote a letter to the CFTC last week with the ag leaders of both House and Senate of this committee, asking the commission, the committee not ignore the concerns of the small ag players in the market, and I hope the CFTC doesn't ignore that either. And, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to ask unanimous consent that the letter be entered into the record that I mentioned, written by myself, Ranking Member Peterson, Chairwoman Stabenow, and Ranking Member Cochran from the Senate Ag Committee.
Without objection.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Finally, I'll ask this question, Mr. Duffy, and of course, anyone else who'd care to answer. If the proposed changes to the residual interest and one-day margin are implemented by the CFTC in the near future, what will the futures commission merchant industry look like in five to 10 years, and what will happen to the farmers and ranchers who they have served for decades?
I'll give you the five to 10-minute version first, because that's what'll happen in five to 10 minutes. We had a meeting in Chicago that former Secretary of Agriculture and myself held Mr. Glickman with all the ag producers and all the groups from around the country, and we had everybody from NCBA to the National Farm Bureau, and they said to a person they would be out of the market instantaneously if this was to happen. So I don't know what's going to happen in five to 10 years, Mr. Chairman, because that's a very difficult thing to try to look into the future, but I can tell you, this is a very serious issue for our farm community. We only have a handful of FCMs that they have the ability to go through today. If those FCMs are burdened with an additional cost, these participants will have nowhere to go in the marketplace except to do over-the-counter type transactions or things of that nature to do their risk management. That's exactly what Dodd-Frank called for them not to do. You want them on a listed exchange doing, in a clearinghouse. This is a critical issue for a good part of the average daily volume of liquidity for farmers and ranchers, because not only does this impact farmers and ranchers, the people that create that liquidity, they will have nowhere else to go. So what happens is, these spreads will widen dramatically, and when those spreads widen dramatically, then the producers of agricultural products will have to pass on that cost of their risk management onto the American consumer. That is not a good outcome on a very bad rule, sir. So I cannot tell you where five to 10 years ago. I'll tell you what's going to happen in five or 10 minutes once this passes off.
Anyone else wish to comment? Sadly, Mr. Chairman, I think that sums it up. I yield back the balance of my time.
Well, thank you, Chairman. Appreciate your questions this morning. Let's now go to Gloria for five minutes. No questions? Mr. Costa for five minutes. No questions? Dr. Binecek, five minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Have any of you had conversations with the CFTC about the, what is their response to your concerns? I mean, it seems like you said that our hands are, they used to just say our hands are tied. Is that the only response that you've gotten to your inquiry about this?
Yeah, conversations that I and others have had, you do have the response that, A, our hands are tied, this is just mandated by the statute. I think there are times when certain members of the commission staff proposed alternatives that would extend the time at which the funds had to be in place to the end of the clearing cycle, which is like 3:00 AM, I think, the next day, and which does really no good at all. So, you know, frankly, in response to the chairman's question, I'm kind of an optimistic guy by nature, and I think that there has been enough outcry on this, that I'm very hopeful that the commission will ultimately adopt a rule that makes sense. It takes three votes up there, and I think I'm optimistic that the reason will prevail. But in conversations, it's been largely, again, that their hands are tied, this is mandated by the statute, and that they're willing to extend it to some point, but not as far as the FIA proposal, which NFA would certainly support.
Let me ask you, has there been a change, and I'm not familiar enough with the commission, has there been a change in the composition of the commission or the staff that would result in, you know, a loss of institutional knowledge, or, you know, the fact that, you know, this has been interpreted one way for 39 years, doesn't seem to bear any weight in the decision-making process? Can you elaborate on that?
Yeah, I think the only change, obviously, has been Commissioner Summers, who has stepped down. The commission has not filled that vacancy yet. They've put up a nominee, the Congress has put up a nominee so far, but yet to be confirmed. So we don't have a full complement of commission. As far as staff goes, they've only made one announcement as of recently that was on the enforcement side on this particular rule issue. Again, you said it correctly, it's been 39 years of interpreting it one way, and I believe this is what Mr. Roth said in his testimony. This is, has nothing to do with what happened to protect customer funds under MF Global or PFG. This would have done zero to prevent what MF Global did to the marketplace. What MF Global did, we don't want to rehash all the things that they did, because I testified in front of this committee and others, they committed a fraud for the most part, and that goes to what Mr. Roth said earlier. We need to have penalties, more than civil, criminal penalties, to make sure that these things don't happen again. But this rule, sir, makes absolutely no sense whatsoever from the commission's standpoint.
Thank you.
I could add to that as well. At the last Ag Advisory Committee meeting, they said same things, hands are tied. We've done a little bit of work, and it appears they're pulling one line out of the Commodity Exchange Act, and the very next line in there says "provided however," and goes on to have a list. I don't know exactly off the top of my head what that says, but we believe that "provided however" phrase might have a little bit of flexibility, and we included that in our written testimony as well.
Does anyone else want to comment? Well, I think I'll yield back my time. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, may I make one more comment, please? I think what's really important, sir, to recognize and not get lulled asleep by the commission or its proposal, as I said in my testimony, and others have also, it's a phased-in proposal, where sometimes that gets very attractive, where the first year there's no change, and so people feel, well, we'll worry about this in a year from now. This, even though it's a phased-in proposal, I assure you, the people that are looking at this will not wait one year to see what year two and three or four are going to look like. They will be out of the market long before that, because what'll happen is, FCMs are going to have to set up business models. They can't have business models for 30 days. They have to put out a two- or three- or five-year business model. This will impact that two- or three- or five-year business model if they try to implement it. So I would hope that the Congress would recognize that this four-year implementation is no different than year four than it is today.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
I'll yield back.
Gentlemen, just back, Austin Scott for five minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We've heard a lot today about the things that are wrong in the proposed rule, and I'm going to, Mr. Roth and Mr. Anderson, if the two of you, what are the things in the rule that you think are right, if anything?
There's a number of things. We support most of the proposal, certainly to the extent that the commission codifies the changes that have already been made by SROs. We're fully supportive of that. In addition, though, they require, they required FCMs to expand our testing of FCM internal controls. I think that's a good idea. They required FCM certified financial reports to be filed within 60 days of the firm's fiscal year-end instead of the current timeframe. I think that's a good idea. It's a harmonization step. They would require that FCMs that are undercapitalized provide immediate notice to the SROs and to the the CFTC. That's a good idea. There's a number of things in there that are a good proposal. There's others that -- residual interest isn't the only issue that we had trouble with, and I recited in my testimony some of those concerns that we have. None of them as grave as with respect to residual interest. So there's a number of things in here that we fully support, and I hope the rule proposal goes forward, and I certainly hope they make the changes that they need to make.
NGFA has been, you know, a big proponent of customer protections. You know, again, these two points, we've debated them here, but in general, I think a lot of the transparency that they're trying to bring through the new rule is positive, so we're certainly supportive, again, of most of what's proposed.
I guess, you know, the loss of faith in the markets is just as detrimental as, you know, the increased cost that may drive -- either one of them can drive people out of the markets. I hope we're able to get to common sense, good resolution that increases that transparency and does not increase the cost astronomically. Mr. Chairman, with that said, I'll yield the remainder of my time out of respect for other members.
All right. Thank you, Austin. Randy Nagabear, five minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Duffy, you enjoyed your editorial in The Wall Street. You know, one of the things that I'm hearing is that, does anybody support the enhanced settlement rule? So, could you repeat that?
Congressman, I'm sorry, does anybody support the residual interest rule? Is that the question?
Right. Yeah, I'm sorry. Yeah. No, I don't think so. But I think one of the things that I wanted to bring up, Mr. Duffy, in your day-to-day operations in the exchange, I mean, y'all are monitoring market movements and where there is potential risk. I mean, it's not like you wait until two, three days later and say what happened, and so that's -- some of those things are happening in a real-time environment, aren't they not?
Congressman, they not have been happening in a real-time environment. They've been happening for a long time in a real-time environment. So we do what's considered twice-daily mark-to-market. We can do pays and collects on an hourly basis if need be, under what market conditions dictate. We spend a tremendous amount of money to make sure to police our markets, not just from abuses in them, but from a risk management standpoint, and that is critically important to the health of the marketplace. So yes, sir, we do that.
And, Mr. Johnson, I mean, you have customers out there, some large and some small, and with various positions out there. You're monitoring the marketplace. As you said, all of your people are basically risk managers, because you're helping your clients manage their risk, but you're also managing your risk in the sense that, making sure that you be able to meet the exchange requirements. Is that a fair statement?
Yeah, that's correct. I mean, the bottom line is, if one of our customers is unable to meet their requirements and goes debit, it's our money that's on the line first. So, you know, from that standpoint, certainly, we're constantly monitoring what our customers are doing, how their positions are being affected by market moves at any given time. So, yeah, I mean, for us, you know, as I said, you know, our whole firm is essentially a risk management department, and we are doing that all the time.
And, Mr. Roth, you mentioned that the response from the CFTC is that their hands are tied and that they feel like there is a legal obligation for them to implement this rule. We're headed for reauthorization period here. What legislative fix would be -- would you suggest that we look at if it appears that the Commission is going to go ahead and implement this rule?
I think if the Commission, in fact, went forward, I think Mr. Anderson pointed out that there's like the qualifying language to the requirement that no one customer's funds be used to margin another customer's positions, the "provided however" language that follows that, in our view, currently provides the Commission the flexibility that it needs. But if the Commission determines otherwise and goes forward with this rule, God forbid, then I think that's an area where Congress might be able to insert language into the Commodity Exchange Act to make clearer that the Commission's rule is invalid and not necessary.
Mr. Duffy.
Just to add to that, I think what would be acceptable is, at least from CME's standpoint and the Futures Industry Association, is to adopt a rule that they have put forward, which is to do trade date plus one at 6:00 PM. And as I said earlier, we feel very confident in surveying a lot of our FCMs that the monies could be collected 80% to 90% by 6:00 PM, trade date plus one.
Anybody else want to comment? Mr. Chairman, I think with that, I'll yield back. Thank you. Ms. Harstler, five minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Dr. Kulp, I was very interested in your testimony about the insurance study, and you said, given the projection that a government-mandated creation of a futures investor customer protection corporation would not have $1 billion in assets to protect futures customers until around 2041, would that imply that a taxpayer-funded line of credit at the Treasury Department would be necessary for it to be viable in the foreseeable future?
I think that's a good question, but part of the answer to the question revolves around where the target funding level comes from. I mean, the target funding level of 2.5 billion is basically what CIPIC's target funding level is. $1 billion, I made mention of that in my written testimony, because it's a nice round number. The real question is, how much do you actually need to cover big potential losses? And with a mandated universal scheme, given what the potential risks are, I find it extremely unlikely that there would be adequate funding without a government backstop to cover a truly catastrophic loss scenario. Part of the problem is, it covers everyone. It's mandated by the government, and it's universal, so that includes small customers and really large customers. Even though there's a contemplated policy limit, there's a lot of risk out there. And the advantage of the voluntary solutions is it enables the people who most value insurance to try to get the insurance that's tailored to their needs, as opposed to, again, forcing the square peg into the round hole of one size fits all for the whole industry.
Yeah, you've used the word scheme twice, so I think we know where you're coming from there, and I --
Sorry.
I don't need to apologize, though. You're the expert, and I just, from a gut level, feel like, you know, we'd be establishing another, like, federal crop or not, flood insurance program or FDIC or how some new government-backed insurance program where the taxpayer ultimately could be responsible for loss there. So appreciate your input on that. I'll look forward to hearing what the insurance companies come back with, harsh quotes for other options there. But I want to move on. Mr. Anderson, first of all, I think I might have some of your facilities in my district in Missouri. Do you have any retail outlets in my district?
No.
Ah, shucks.
Our retail outlets are all in northwest Ohio, Toledo area.
Oh, well, that's all right. But I wanted to ask you a question, though. Your testimony highlights the points that had the CFTC's proposed rule been in place when MF Global failed, possibly twice as much customer money, the hard-earned money of many farmers and ranchers, you know, would have been lost. So how must the CFTC change its proposed rule in order to avoid such a stark possibility from happening in the future? I believe Mr. Duffy said something about criminal penalties earlier. I don't know, both you want -- but if you want to start, Mr. Anderson, and then Mr. Duffy, or?
Sure. You know, frankly, we've supported going back to the consistent interpretation that's been there, which would allow the futures industry to continue operating as it has. That's our opinion, and FIA also had a proposal a little bit different than that, but I think either of those will keep -- the goal is really to keep the FCM from asking for money upfront.
Yeah.
To cover that move that may or may not come. And as long as we have a consistent -- if we can go back to the consistent interpretation that we've always had, that would suffice.
Okay. Mr. Duffy, you want to add anything? Go back to the elder.
Actually, I was only emphasizing a point that Mr. Roth made, so he said it earlier about the civil and criminal penalties.
Okay.
I'm sorry. Did you need to hear more on that?
Yeah, sure.
Just the point, the question is whether we should increase the civil penalty sanctions that the CFTC can impose, and I -- my only point was that civil sanctions are very important, but in my experience, the most effective deterrent to wrongful conduct by far is not civil penalties, but criminal penalties. And so it's, ultimately, you have to enforce the rules that are on the books and get criminal prosecutions when people steal money.
Okay. Yes, you want to add something?
And just to add to Mr. Roth, the rule's already on the books that any willful violation of the Commodity Exchange Act is a felony and bears up to 10 years in prison. The CFTC has already brought a civil enforcement act against the CEO of MF Global. We think that the Department of Justice should go ahead and bring criminal prosecutions along the same vein, and we also think that the Department of Justice needs to investigate the misrepresentations made by MF Global senior management before this committee and other committees when testifying about their conduct in the days leading up to the bankruptcy.
All right. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thanks, gentlewoman. Bishop Lamoffa, five minutes.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. For Mr. Johnson here, you know, earlier you testified how your family's been around 30 years in the business, and you worked primarily with the smaller firms, the smaller growers, and you already went through some difficulty, obviously, back in 2007, where, because you got caught up in that, you had to close one of your offices. What was the impact on the number of personnel because of that, and -- or in general since then, and with changes in rulemaking, et cetera?
Well, in that case, we closed one of our three offices, which had about 25% of our staff, total staff, you know, and that was as a result of a, you know, we've talked a lot about the two main FCM failures here, the PFG and MF Global. That was another FCM failure, which didn't result in any customers losing money, but a number of other FCMs who had money invested there did lose money, and we were one of those.
If the rules, if CFTC rules are adopted as proposed for your operation, how much would you have to alter, or are you one of the ones that in 10 minutes is?
Well, that's a possibility for us, because we are a small, very small FCM. We clear a lot of our business at, for instance, the CME through another FCM, so it will depend a little bit on how they treat it. If they force us to double or triple our margins, we will initially have to do that to our customers, and then it becomes an issue. I don't think that, you know, we would be gone in five or 10 minutes. In our case, it would be a question of how many of our customers are going to leave us because of that, and --
Well, they have a better place to go under those conditions than you. They'll be more attracted to go to a larger.
It may be if they can find a larger FCM that's even willing to clear them.
Yeah.
In a lot of cases, with many of our smaller customers, they're not even, you know, the larger FCMs aren't even interested in doing business with those people. So a lot of them may just decide to leave the futures markets altogether.
Completely.
Which is, you know, a problem, I think, for them and for the industry as a whole.
Certainly, certainly. Mr. Duffy, we're hearing about a proposal from the White House to impose a transaction tax on the operations of CFTC. Now, we've seen that, similarly, that the SEC's budget over a decade has practically doubled. What do you see if this tax is imposed and there's a larger budget for CFTC? What do you see happening in the future there with that additional requirement for budget for CFTC, and what they're going to be doing with it as far as enforcement?
So, fold, I think that the user fee question and the CFTC budget question and the SEC has doubled their budget. Obviously, this, you know, Professor Kulp mentioned how the difference between capital formation and risk management, capital formation, you can go ahead and charge a per-share stock per transaction to fund the SEC, because most people will hold on to a share of stock much longer than they will a derivative product, and you have many more participants in the marketplace to make it up, so it's much easier. In our world, there is not nearly as many as the liquidity providers that are in the marketplace, and right now, our highest liquidity providers that are standing there all day long creating tight bid offers, we charge, in order to get the $300 million that the CFTC has proposed, there would have to be a four-and-a-half-cent charge to our largest liquidity providers to raise that $300 million annually. That's a 70% increase in their cost of doing business to provide liquidity. If, in fact, you charge any business a 70% increase in cost to do business, they're going to do one of two things. They're going to figure out how to lay off that risk to somebody else or that cost to somebody else, and the only way market makers could do that is to widen their bid offer, as I talked earlier. So if, in fact, we were to impose a transaction tax or a user fee on the participants of liquidity providers, this, the bid offer spread would widen, so the producers of products of grains and livestock and products like that, those costs would either be out of the market and have to be assumed themselves, passed on to the consumer, and there's one thing that's really important here, Congressman. The United States Treasury has an auction every week, and at that auction every week, as you know, the yields have not been very great, but they're aggressively in there bidding for them. The reason people can aggressively bid for the United States auction every week is because there's a liquid futures market to lay that risk off. If that spread widens in the futures market because the cost of business goes up by 70%, the amount that will cost the taxpayers in facilitating that debt will go up by billions and billions of dollars, because those spreads will widen. That will force the yield to go up on the Treasury debt. So this is one of the most penny-wise, dollar-foolish things I've ever seen in my entire life. We've seen user fees, just as an example, being in India just this past summer, absolutely destroyed the market by 25%. Sweden had, 20 years ago, imposed a transaction fee. They no longer are a financial services center whatsoever. In Europe, there was a Tobin tax proposed, as we all know. That Tobin tax has not been implemented and been watered down to basically nothing throughout the rest of Europe, and will not even apply to derivatives. So these are big issues associated with these markets, how fragile liquidity can be and what the cost of liquidity can be.
I appreciate that answer. My time's up, but thank you.
Thank you, sir.
All right. Ms. Roby for five minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you all for being here today. We've touched on this, Mr. Johnson, but I really want to drill down, and if you could elaborate, if the industry consolidates as a result of the proposed rule, let's talk about the little guys, what the impact is going to be on small farmers and agricultural firms that make up most of your customers, if you would.
Well, as I stated earlier, you know, most of our customers are small farmers, some small, you know, maybe some larger farmers or small agricultural firms. The issue with a consolidation of the FCM industry is that, for the most part, the larger FCMs, especially the bank-owned FCMs, are not interested in doing business with really small customers. From their standpoint, doing the risk management on a small customer is really about the same amount of work as it is on a large customer in terms of time and staff and things like that, and yet, the benefits that they get from those larger customers are a lot greater. You know, from our standpoint, we've been doing business with our customers for years. I mean, we've been, we'll celebrate our 30th year next year. Many of our customers have been with us for a long time, a large portion of that time. Our order desk staff averages between 15 and 20 years of experience in the industry. So we know our customers. We're able to do the risk management on those customers in an efficient way. If a firm like us were to no longer be able to do business because, you know, a number of our customers left us for some reason, I believe that a lot of them would have a very difficult time finding another place to do business. Or if they did, the business would be a lot more expensive for them. They'd either be required to put up a lot more margin or pay a lot higher commissions to other firms to cover their costs in terms of doing the risk management and things like that. The real issue is that the small FCMs, the mid-sized FCMs like us, are the ones that do the farmer business, and those are the ones that are most at risk.
Sure. Thank you very much. And, Mr. Anderson, can you elaborate as well what the consequences for your business and your customers if the CFTC's proposed rule on the customer protections is finalized with no changes?
If the double margining, you know, we think that's a reasonable conclusion. It's going to drive up our cost to doing business. When we buy grain from the farmer, we sell futures on the Chicago Board of Trade or CME Group, and now it's going to cost us twice as much to do that. We typically pass on some sort of fee to the farmer, so it's either going to come to them on the front end, or, you know, we're a low-margin business, so we'll look to make a little more margin to offset some of those fees. And I don't think that's unique among the elevator industry. I think that's, people will look to recoup that cost one way or another.
Thank you again for all being here today, and, Mr. Chairman, I yield back.
Thanks, your lady. Mr. Davis for five minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and a thank you to all the witnesses. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and a thank you to all the witnesses. Raise your hand if you're from Illinois. Let the record show. Thank you, Mr. Enyer. Let the record show that four witnesses raised their hand, being from the great state of Illinois, which I just wanted to gloat to my fellow colleagues how important the state of Illinois is to this issue.
Gloating was noted and offensive.
Thank you. Duly noted, sir. Offending the chairman is probably not a good way to start the hearing today, is it? But a lot of questions have been asked. And, Mr. Duffy, to start with, I enjoyed your expanding on the White House's proposal for the transaction tax. Are there, do you, are there any other issues you'd like to address on that particular question that you may not have had time for?
Other than, you know, this is one of those fees, I got asked this in the United States Senate a couple of months ago, if the industry's not going to pay for it, who should pay for it? And it's a very difficult scenario to say. This is one of those situations where we're talking that the CFTC is looking for funding because they have to have oversight of $641 trillion over-the-counter business. I like to remind Congress that the $640 trillion over-the-counter business has less than 2,000 transactions a day. We don't measure risk in notional value. We measure it in the amount of transaction of participants in the marketplace. We do 15 to 20 million transactions in the futures markets today. We trade over a quadrillion dollars of risk on an annual basis. So I don't, I mean, that's 17 zeros, Congressman, so that's a lot of risk. And we've been doing that flawlessly for many, many years. So I don't think we can measure the amount of funds associated with an agency on a notional value of the contracts. Secondly, I think that anytime we look to impose user fees, the detriment that that could do, like I said earlier, I mean, if you want to charge an industry $300 million, unfortunately, I think you're going to charge the taxpayers several billion dollars of the offsetting cost that people will pass on to the users, not just in the treasury debt facilitation, but in the price of wheat, corn, barley, livestock, and everything else, because it will have to go up if there is no risk management or the cost of risk management goes up. So this is really a good, you know, this is essential for the food supply of the United States of America.
I agree. And thank you very much. One other question. I mean, obviously, MF Global has been an issue that's been discussed already in most of the testimony and in some of the questions. What's CME's role in facilitating the processes that are being put in place to avoid another MF Global situation?
You know, I think Mr. Roth and I both have outlined several things in our testimony, both orally and writtenly. And I think that these are new things that have not had a chance to be fully, you know, they're implemented, but let's see the full value of them. And I think that's what's important here. We have put many new protections in, and I think Dan said it right, the look-through into the customers' balances is something that we didn't have before, which we, if we had had the electronic look-through before, PFG wouldn't have happened. So, or would have been discovered much earlier. First of all, with all due respect, Congressman, you know, you can put a cop on every corner and somebody's going to still try to commit a crime. There was falsified records associated with MF Global. I don't want to debate all the facts. We did that many of times in this committee and others. The good news is, I think, there's many new protections for the clients today. And if we can have the deterrent, that Mr. Roth referenced, where we have criminal penalties associated with, with some teeth in it, that would be the most important thing.
Thank you. And lastly, obviously, we've heard through your testimony, Dr. Kulp and others, that if customers are unwilling to purchase private insurance, that a government-mandated program funded by market participants might be a viable option. Mr. Duffy, I've seen your testimony, you disagree with this, and can you expand on that, too?
Yeah, I'm not big on government-mandated programs. I don't think they're good. I like the private sector answer better. If people want to have an opt-in insurance policy that they want to pay for, I've said it before in public testimony, that should be their right to do so. I will tell you, Congressman, we have $100 million fund set aside for farmers and ranchers for this type of activity. So if there's any type of fraud or things of that nature, we will pay bona fide hedgers, which we have done in PFG's case, where we didn't even have the obligation to do it because we weren't even DSRO for PFG. But we paid them out on that particular program. That $100 million, so think about that, that's not a lot in a business that's got multi-billion under management. We have $105 billion of margin on account. That $100 million was uninsurable from a practical standpoint. So I can't imagine how we could ever get a scheme together, I don't want to use the word scheme again, but a scheme together to put together enough money to oversee the system. And the last thing that I or anybody at CME Group would support would be have a government backstop.
Thank you. My time has expired.
Gentlemen, your time expired. Mr. Enyer, any questions?
I'll wait my time to Mr. Scott.
Gentlemen, you have two. Mr. Scott for five minutes.
All right, thank you. Let me go back. I want to make sure we get everybody on the record on this. Does everybody agree? I think, Mr. Duffy, you concur that we should have criminal charges being brought. So I think you spoke to that. Is that correct? You're with that?
Yes, sir.
All right. And, Mr. Roth, you gave an eloquent answer. What's interesting is, Mr. Chairman, you put such a nice, diverse committee here. It would be good to see if we could get everybody on board on that. So I put that question to everybody pretty quickly to really protect the customers and to punish these violators and manipulators. Do you all agree or disagree with Mr. Roth and Mr. Duffy that we should bring criminal charges and that that would help this if we could put some of these folks in prison and that would cut it down? Is that, is everybody on board with that or somebody different?
NGFA, we haven't recommended any specific penalties, but we certainly believe there needs to be appropriate teeth in the law. We just haven't quite, haven't quite advocated exactly what we mean by that yet.
So you are not, you do not, you don't have, you do not agree that they, that we should bring criminal charges?
Today, we would, we would not have enough information to say yes or no to that.
All right. Mr. Cullen, I do not want to murder your name. What is it? Catulus.
Catulus.
Thank you. I'm sorry.
Not at all. Thank you. We believe that the current law is there to bring criminal charges for MF Global. We believe there's a mountain of evidence to support that, as Mr. Duffy alluded to. And we think the bringing of criminal charges would do a lot to restore confidence in the futures markets.
Very good. And, Mr. Johnson?
Well, I certainly believe that anytime that somebody commits fraud or steals money from their customers, they deserve to be criminally charged.
Thank you. Thank you very much on that. Now, Mr. Anderson, let me ask you, you, in your testimony, you call for a pilot program of a customer option for a fully segregated account structure to be set up by the industry itself and not through legislation, correct? But the point is, if Congress fails to make changes to the bankruptcy court, or code, clarifying that customer funds and segregated accounts are always first in line for disbursement, then does a fully segregated account structure really provide much additional protection?
That's a very good question. And I think it, I think it's going to come down, like you said, to the bankruptcy code and where those assets lie. The reason for a pilot program is maybe to see a little bit of how that would work as well with those funds being completely fully segregated away from the FCM. How does that work? How do the mechanics work? What are the costs associated with it? And then I think, I think some time needs to be spent on the law as well.
Okay. Dr. Kulp, in your testimony, you mentioned that over the long history of the futures industry, few customer funds have been lost, either from the failure of future commission merchants or losses arising from the result of fellow customer risk exposures. That is until recent events with MF Global and Paragon Financial Group. On the security side, the Securities Investors Protection Corporation has initiated at least 325 proceedings under the Securities Investment Protection Act to recover cash or securities for customers. And approximately $120 billion have been distributed back to customers over CIPCA's 42-year history. 1.1 billion of that from the CIPCA fund. And as you have researched, the possibility of some kind of futures insurance fund like CIPCA fund, have you found any explanation for why, over time, we have seen far more instances of customer losses on the security side than we have seen on the future side?
I can say that wasn't a question that we specifically addressed in the study. But from my familiarity with the markets, it goes a little bit to an earlier comment, the fundamental difference between securities and futures and the constituents of those markets. Many of the investors in securities markets are investors. They're buy-and-hold, stock purchasers. And a lot of the claims that the CIPIC has encountered over time have been related to the fact that there are different risk managements and controls in place in securities than there are in futures. For example, the at-least-twice-daily margining that Mr. Duffy mentioned, that's not something that we do in securities markets. We do that in futures markets. And there's a litany of other risk managements and controls, but it's easy to think securities and futures are more similar than they are. They are actually very, very different in a lot of ways. And although, like I said, I didn't research this for this study, I'm pretty convinced that's the answer.
Thank you, sir. I yield.
Mr. Scott, first off, I ask unanimous consent to enter into the record the written statement from the Managed Funds Association. Without objection, so ordered. Dr. Kulp, one of the criticisms of the insurance product was that you've got a disproportionate burden of the funding of this thing versus the risks being protected. Half a cent or half a percent fee on gross transactions for everybody. Did you look at other funding models that would be more in line with risks covered, being paid for by that risk? In other words, can you, is there any possible way of scaling the fee structure back to coverage just to $250,000 that's the gross of the account? Other funding models?
Just to clarify, you mean in a universal mandated scheme?
Yeah, the one that you, that, yeah, universal mandated scheme.
No. You know, we thought about it. The problem is, there's a lot of different possibilities. So for the mandated universal coverage scheme, we focused on the proposal that's out there. And part of the problem with the scenario-based approach that we used is you can come up with an almost endless number of potential scenarios. So we tried to focus on the ones that were most likely to be proposed.
So, in other words, the 2.5 billion in reserves that you think are needed to cover the scheme in 50 years, whatever, covers just the 250,000 per account?
Yes, sir.
Risks? And that, so the scope of a fee just on the, you know, you pull the folks whose assets are beyond 250 and not charge those a fee, the scope, the fee would be such, it just even, it makes no rational sense at all, right, to get to the 250, 2.5 billion? If you scaled your fee just to the activities within the $250,000 accounts and less?
Then it would be even harder to get to that target number, substantially so.
Okay. Mr. Roth, when PFG failed, triggered somewhat, or the record may reflect, triggered by the fact that you began to confirm account balances directed with the banks. Two questions. One, some evidence that the owner there had been falsifying the bank's statements to provide you on a daily basis or whatever. Could you reverse that now and falsify the confirmation? In other words, you're comparing the balances conferred by this FCM as to segregated accounts with what the bank says is there?
Correct.
And so could this fellow have falsified the records on the, that you're comparing to, to cook the books, just to reverse it, what PFG did?
Yeah. Congressman, I'm never going to suggest that there's a silver bullet which prevents any.
No, no, I'm not suggesting, I'm just saying, but at least the second question is, I think after the PFG, your organization went through an extensive review of your own processes and own audits. Can you walk us through that?
Yeah, we actually retained a group, Berkeley Research Group. And the principals of the Berkeley Research Group were the same individuals that performed a study on behalf for the SEC, on the Madoff Study. And we asked them to come in and review the entire history of NFA's dealings with Paragon in particular and to review all the examinations that we had done. And in the course of their study, they reviewed, I think, what was, 3 million pages of documents going over our entire history. And they made a number of really helpful suggestions. They basically found that the exams that we had performed were professionally and competently done, but that we need to do better. And we're incorporating all of those suggestions. And the core suggestion, really, is to just always inculcate an attitude of professional skepticism in your staff. We've had all of our staff now, anyone who's been at NFA and the Compliance Department for more than a year, will have to go through a certified fraud examiner training process to try to, again, develop and nurture that sort of attitude of professional skepticism and always trying to view every possibility of uncovering fraud.
All right. And the idea that if I'm this FCM and I'm stealing out of my segregated account?
Right.
How do you catch, and I send you a document that's, and I'm tracking what's actually there. I've stolen from them. I send you the document that says, here's what I think's in the account. You get from the bank, excuse me, David, a confirmation that that's where I've stolen. But how do you catch, how do you catch me stealing from the account?
Well, if you're claiming to have $200 million in the bank and the bank says that you've got $5 million.
I got that part. If I say I've got 200 and the bank says I've got 200, but I really should have had 400?
Yeah. So that's when you're undercounting your assets and underreporting your assets. And what we do to try to address that issue is that in the examination process, we do confirmations with customers. So on a select basis.
Okay.
But you test certain customers and say, the firm is reporting that you have X, do you, in fact, have X?
I get it.
So that can't be done on a daily basis.
Right.
But it's part of the examination process.
I get you. I appreciate that. One question that we haven't really touched much on, and that is the CFTC's attitude toward cost-benefit analysis on proposed rulemaking, that kind of thing. Dave and I, and quite frankly, the Congress is working, our committee is working toward strengthening those cost-benefit analysis procedures at the CFTC. Can any of you or all of you comment on your experience with, not that we're going to re-trade or redo Dodd-Frank, but I've got plenty of anecdotes where the CFTC said, here's what we think it will cost the industry and the participants to comply with this rule, and it's turned out to be a multiple of that number in most instances. Can you talk to us about what your attitude is about the cost-benefit analysis attitude at the CFTC and how they're mechanically going about it? One more time.
This may not be particularly helpful, but...
Then don't say it. Just kidding.
Within NFA, the rulemaking process within NFA is that, was we develop rules, and you're always trying to develop rules that are cost-effective. And we just get input directly from the industry. If, and as part of our rulemaking process, when we have to deal with our advisory committees and our board of directors, and we have to go to the industry professionals and say, this is the public policy we're trying to achieve, this is how we're proposing to do it, they give us real good and real direct impact input about what the costs are. So in NFA, we get that input directly from the industry as part of the rulemaking process, and it's very, very helpful.
But in terms of what the CFTC has done through the Dodd-Frank implementation and their ability to use cost benefit as a part of their decision-making process as to what rules to put in place or what rules not to put in place, i.e., residual interest information that's warning, did the CFTC look at the many of the concerns that you talked about as a part of their deliberations to get to their rule that they think is appropriate?
And I don't know what their inner deliberations were, but I can certainly tell you that they didn't have any contact with NFA where they asked us for our input on that topic.
Mr. Duffy?
There's been a tremendous amount of comment letters filed on this particular issue and, obviously, the congressional testimony. So the final rule has yet to be voted on. So hopefully, the cost-benefit analysis that you are referencing, they're taking all the comment letters along with this congressional hearing and taking that into account, which will come up with a decision that should have to be made. So hopefully, we're getting a little ahead of ourselves yet. And to Chairman Lucas's point earlier, we don't, maybe not have a lot of faith, but at the same time, we do need to let the process go through.
All right. Other members of the committee, have questions? Yeah, David?
Let me follow up a little bit on our bill, 1003, cost-benefit analysis, which is very important. The President and his executive order has offered all those agencies to do cost-benefit analysis for rulemaking. The CFTC, being the primary regulator, should be, or a joint, making joint rulemaking with the SEC, for example. They have assessment and cost-benefit analysis before each. However, again, I just make this comment that the CFTC doesn't have enough staff right now to do what it is that they are doing. And so I just urge each of you, and each of you have your own constituencies, that we've got to increase the funding. we've got to increase the funding of the CFTC. If we don't, it's going to hurt all of us. No matter, we could pass all these bills and all these regulations that put it on it, and it needs to be. But, this needs to happen. But, we need to give the CFTC the tools with which to work right now. Right now, they're bleeding people. So, I just make an appeal to you in the industry to join with many of us here in these real fighting budgetary times. Right now, the government is shut down. Right now, we're running a government by crisis. I mean, I don't know how long this is going to go on. But, this is a primary example of what I'm talking about that brings about the uncertainty, unassuredness that we have. And I always am taking the opportunity to push and hope people will hear, not like John the Baptist in the wilderness, but I guarantee you, I'm asking for you all to join with me in that and say, look, doggone it, let's give the CFTC the money they need and not pour this load on them so they can, they can do the job that they absolutely need. And finally, the other reason we need this is to be able to put the CFTC in a stronger defense position for any lawsuits or legal activity. For if they have the cost-benefit analysis requirement to back themselves up, they would be more in a better position to sustain these outward charges or lawsuit. Yeah, Mr. Duffy?
Mr. Scott, so I don't want to leave any misimpressions. I have been on the record, and the CME has been on the record for many of years, that we do believe that the CFTC needs to be adequately funded. So, we wholeheartedly support what you're saying. We have one of the more dynamic businesses in the United States. If you look at the growth rate of the listed derivatives, regulated derivatives business in the United States over the last 40 years, it has been just exploding and has benefited farmers, ranchers, you know, bankers, all the different people, mortgage people that use the marketplace. These are all benefits to the United States of America. So, we agree with you wholeheartedly that it needs to be fully funded and it is absolutely essential to do so. So, we echo your comments, and I hope we didn't leave you the impression that we don't think it should be funded to a proper level.
Thank you very much. Anybody else? Yeah, Mr.?
Ranky, Mr. Scott. We agree also wholeheartedly that the CFTC needs adequate funding, especially when you contemplate the implementation of Dodd-Frank and essentially that the industry is building a new regulatory regime for cleared swaps essentially from scratch. I will give, I guess, an anecdote as to the attitude inside CFTC as opposed, or when it comes to managing funds, and that we met with just about every commissioner to discuss the conversion of MF Global's holding company to a Chapter VII. And we continuously got the response, why would you do that? Just let the trustee handle it. And I mean, they just didn't seem to grasp like how expensive relying on the three different trustees that were there and MF Global was. And after testifying last February at the roundtable on customer protections regarding residual interest, staff really did not seem to grasp just how expensive that proposal would be for the industry and how damaging it would be to the gentleman on my left and right. So, I think a little bit of attitude adjustment is required, but more funding would go a very long way to helping them fulfill their mission.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. All right. I'll thank our witnesses. And David, do you have any kind of closing remarks? Any more John the Baptist references or anything?
This has just been a very effective hearing and very enjoyable. I've learned a lot from it, and I think it did a good job in getting a great diversified group from different areas, although most of them are from Illinois. But, they do.
Exactly. All right. Well, I also want to thank all the witnesses, including the ones from Illinois. We'll do a little bit of a job of looking for Texas witnesses next time perhaps. But, on a serious note, I appreciate each of you coming in. I know with so much certainty this week about whether or not we'd have this hearing. There may be those out there that criticize Dave and I for going ahead and having this hearing in face of the shutdown. It is our constitutional responsibility to reauthorize the CFTC. It is better off if we reauthorize it than if we don't, and this hearing is integral to that. We would not be able to get your comments and the written record established had we not had the hearing today, if we move forward with the reauthorization at the pace that we're going to try to move forward with. So, Dave and I made the decision to go ahead and hold the hearing, and I appreciate the witnesses taking their time to come share that with us this morning. And look forward to folding your comments into our markup and the rules and the bill that we'll do in terms of the reauthorization. So, with those comments, I again thank the witnesses for being here. And the, under the rules of the committee, the record of today's hearing will remain open for 10 calendar days to receive additional, excuse me, additional material and supplementary written responses from the witness to any question posed by a member. This hearing of the Subcommittee on General Farm Committees and Risk Management is adjourned. Thank you.